Councilmember Carr is absent. Councilmember Panduro?
Present.
Councilmember Tonason?
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Here.
Councilmember Williams is also absent. Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight, our invocation will be presented by our police chaplain, Greg Engen. Come on down, Greg.
As we close out 2023, I just want to express my personal thanks to the mayor and to the city council for your service to the city of Fairfield. You're all in a position of influence, and the policies that you enact affect people's lives. And so after tonight, you'll be looking at 2024 and the challenges that are going to be in front of you. And so tonight, I just wanted to offer up a prayer of Thanksgiving and for the city of Fairfield at this time. So would you bow your heads with me as I open in a word of prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you for our mayor, city council members, city manager, our first responders, the fire department, police department, and all staff here at the city of Fairfield. Thank you, Lord, for placing each person in their specific role that you have destined. I ask that you would give them strength, good health, and fulfillment as they carry out their responsibilities. This evening, I ask that you give our city leaders knowledge, discernment, and wisdom as they meet the challenges of our city. Give them courage and the integrity to make the tough decisions that benefit the people. Lord, we pray for the citizens of Fairfield. Father, you give them prosperity, not poverty; that you give them peace, not violence; that you give them hope, not despair, as they would come to you. Tonight, I declare a special blessing over our mayor and city council as they transact the business of our city. Lord, we thank you for all the positive things that have occurred in 2023, and we look expectedly into 2024. I pray all of these things in the name of the Father, the Lord Jesus Christ, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chaplain, and thank you for all your service as well. We really need you. And Councilman Tonason, could you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Please join me in the pledge of our flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmen. And now we'll go ahead and do council reports. We'll start with you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your time with us. It's always a better meeting when we have a full chamber like we do tonight, so welcome. Thanks for everyone watching from home as well. I will be very brief this evening. I just want to remind everyone that we will be having a town hall meeting this coming Saturday, the 9th of December, at Rolling Hills Elementary School from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 -- I'm sorry, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. I just scared the city manager. But 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Rolling Hills Elementary School this Saturday. We will be discussing the PFAL issue in the neighborhood. This will be our second and probably final meeting on this very important topic. So if you want your voice to be heard, please come on out on Saturday. We'll be talking about common ground and recommendations to the city council from the neighborhood. So that's what I have to say. We will be back before Christmas, right?
Yes.
So I'll reserve my Merry Christmas, but happy holidays, and once again, thanks for coming down tonight. That's all I have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to share that this past Saturday, I joined our Fairfield PD. So during Christmas time, during the holiday season, they do a Santa in the Neighborhood. So they take Santa Claus out into different parts of Fairfield, and they spend time, at least, they do at least four stops. And so we get to go, and all, it's really lovely. All the families come out, all the kids come out and get to meet Santa Claus, take pictures with him, give him their lists, and then they also get a candy cane and some hot chocolate. So it's a really fun way to celebrate the holidays with community. And so it's happening every Friday and Saturday evening, the next, this weekend and the weekend after. So the last weekend will be the 15th and the 16th. And if you want to follow them and see if they're going to be in your neighborhood, just follow the Fairfield PD, look them up on Facebook or Instagram, and they have the schedule there. And then they do a live feed. So while they're in different neighborhoods, they'll say, okay, now we're leaving to the street, so that you can follow along and see where they're going to be. And I want to just thank, special shout out to Lieutenant Kresha because he was our Santa Claus this last time and probably maybe one more time. And so they take turns being Santa, our officers do. So it's a really great way for them to engage and build community relationships with our families. And then second, I wanted to bring attention to everyone who has an interest in our Parks and Recreation Open Spaces. So we are creating a new master plan for our Parks Recreation Open Spaces. So we have two community workshops coming up. There's one tomorrow at 6:00 o'clock, just here up the street at the community center at Willow Hall. It's 6:00 to 8:00. And we want to be able to get feedback from our community to see what you want, like to see in our open spaces and parks. Y luego para nuestra comunidad que hablas español, también vamos a tener un taller en español el jueves 7 de diciembre de las 6 a 8 in Lake Range Middle School porque también queremos saber lo que quieren ellos en nuestros parques y espacios abiertos. So everyone is welcome to attend. If you're able to register, that'd be great, so we can see who is going to be there. But we would love to see as many, as much community as there as possible. And that is all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Vicaro, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As everyone said before, it's great to see everybody in the, in the audience tonight. It's always great to have a packed house. I hope everyone enjoyed their Thanksgiving holiday. And the only thing I wanted to say, I wanted to thank Parks and Rec for putting on a great Christmas tree lighting the other night. I think that was the most crowded I've ever seen the downtown for a Christmas tree lighting. So thank you, Christina, and everybody who was involved, police, fire, Parks and Public Works, everybody. So it was really, it was really a great night. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Tonason?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Rick's comments on the tree lighting. It was a great event. The stores were, shops were full, especially the coffee shops. But again, shout out to Parks and Rec. We had Small Business Saturday last week. BossCon put that on. It was a really good turnout. I believe 43 businesses participated, so it's nice to see the downtown businesses get involved. And we did, Councilmember Carr and I attended the Holiday Craft Fair at the Adult Recreation Center. It's always a good time. It's always full. They say it starts at 10:00, but you can get there early, and certainly they're set up by then. And then this Friday, Santa's going to be out around District 2, Crawley Lane and Phoenix Drive. So if you're residing in District 2, or if you reside in Fairfield in general, come on out. It's a great time, and I hope to see you guys there. Happy holidays.
Thank you, councilmen. Tonight, I just have two meetings that I want to tell you about. One is coming up on Thursday, this Thursday, at 6:00 p.m. And this is a town hall meeting that Flannery or California Forever is holding here at the community center in Willow Hall. And they like you to sign up ahead of time, but they said they may have some open seats there. There were down in Vallejo. And this is the group of billionaires who want to build another city between here and Ria Vista. So anybody can show up for this, I think, and they're going to, they say they're going to take questions this time instead of you having to turn in the questions ahead of time. So, so I'll see you there. And then on Monday, so a week from yesterday, 12:11 at 5:30, we're going to be lighting the city's menorah. And that will be down at the Solana County Lawn, which is right there, Jefferson Street in Texas. You can't miss it. We'll have the big fire truck there and so on. There'll be refreshments there and some fun for the young people. It's usually pretty fun. It can be a little chilly, so put on the caps. Yeah, I'm not sure if there's going to be any rain. And then the last thing is, we have, from our sister city, we have a contingent of teenagers from high school and, and also somebody from the, not the governor, the mayor's office, might as well be the governor. Anyway, the mayor's office and also somebody's come along and hang out with them. And they'll be, we'll be talking to them tonight. We had a good time today. They have been very busy. Staff has been very busy bringing them around to show them around Fairfield. And today, I was in here with them this morning, and they sat here as the city council and mayor. And I was a resident who came up and asked a question, and I asked them, what are we going to do about the speeding in the neighborhoods? Because that's one of the number one things that we hear a lot. And they came up with the idea of not allowing vehicles in neighborhoods anymore. So I'm going to try that. I thought it was actually brilliant, you know? And so anyway, they were great. It was really awesome. So we'll see them up here tonight, too. We'll have a presentation, and we're just so happy that they're here after their mayor was here a little while back. And so welcome, and we will hear from them later. And that's it for me. And Mr. City Manager, anything from you?
No reports from me tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
I have no reports tonight. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
I have no report as well.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Now we're going to turn to presentations. Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first presentation, Veterans Day Parade Awards, presented by Director of Parks and Recreation, Christina Konzinger, and Special Events Coordinator Juan Segura and Andrea Azuria.
So I wanted just to first also echo the thank you for all of our partners and our sister city departments and staff that help us with all of these events, and also a shout out to our sponsor this year was BMW. And also wanted to take advantage of wishing Andrea well. She is actually going to be leaving us this week for another position, and she has been awesome, and we really will be missing her. So I would ask for a round of applause for all the hard work and dedication she has given us. And with that, I will turn it over to the awesome staff to present awards.
Thank you, Christina. Hello, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. My name is Juan Segura. I'm a program coordinator, and this is my colleague Andrea Soria, a program specialist with Parks and Recreation. It is my honor today to present the plaques to the category winners for the 2023 parade, Veterans Day Parade. But first, let me thank you for the very kind words regarding the tree lighting. We were very pleased to have a very successful tree lighting, and my first tree lighting, and it was wonderful. Thank you. How about that Grinch? He stole the show. He really did. It was nice to see the community out there come together to start the holiday season. I would also like to take a moment to thank all the city departments who helped out with the event, especially Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works. The tree lighting could not happen without our sponsors and partners, BMW, VW Fairfield, Republic Services, the Matt Garcia Foundation, Crumble Cookie, Celebration Church, the volunteers and the Parks and Recreation staff who worked the event. Thank you. And now on to the awards. The theme for this year's parade was saluting American veterans. This year, we had 43 entries, which totaled to over 1,000 people and 150 vehicles that participated in the parade. It was nice to see a lot of you out there, and we hope you enjoy the parade as much as we did. Each category winner receives $150 cash reward, award. Sweepstakes, which is the highest score entry, receives a $250 award. We had five judges. The category winners are determined by the results. And the first up would be our commercial category, which was won by the American Red Next is our military category. That was won by the 364 Recruiting Squadron. Next is the walking category, won by the Oakbrook Academy of Arts. Next is the vehicle category, and also the mayor's vehicles, won by the True Family Car And last, we have our Sweepstakes winner and $250 richer, Rancho Los Estrada. Thank you all. We look forward to seeing you at the menorah lighting Monday, November 11 at 5:30 p.m. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
We're a little bit off, sorry, council. I, tonight, invited a family and a young lady who's very special to me and to our city. And so they're very much into scouts and serving our city. And tonight, I'd like Mia Henderson to come up, and the family can come up, too, if you'd like. So Mia just earned her gold medal in Girl Scouts, which is a really, really big deal. And in fact, it's the top that you can get as a Girl Scout. And she's earned it, and I'm going to have her come up here and talk about how she did that, because it is a lot of, it's a lot of work. And we are so very proud of you and your family. You all are so great, everything you do. I love this family and all the scouts. I learned very well from Mayor Price over the years and him loving scouts and being one himself. And so I started getting involved with, about a few years ago, and I'm so honored to have Mia here tonight. And so Mia, I'm going to give you this certificate. Now, look, it's coming, coming out of it. Oh, it's so pretty, too. Anyway, it's a certificate of congratulations from us, and it's in recognition of your personal achievement in earning the Distinguished Girl Scouts Gold Award. The citizens of the community and the officials of city government hereby salute you. And this was dated on December 3, 2023, and I signed it. And so I'll give that to you. Did you get a picture?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would, but I'm going to have Mia come up, and she's going to, I know this is a surprise, right? I'm also giving you some Jelly Bellies and a City of Fairfield pen.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. So now is the embarrassing part, not for you, because you're a leader. So go ahead and stand up and tell us how you earned it.
Thank you for your, all of your support. I couldn't have done it without the support of the Fairfield City Council. It was definitely a struggle to get the gold award, but with all of your guys' help, it was, you made it very easy to get. So I thank you for your support.
Very good. What about festival down here? Can we just step down here and we'll take a, a picture together, Mia? I like, I like your sweater. Come on now. Here's your certificate. Do you guys want me in the picture or not? Not here, doesn't matter. I can ruin the family. Okay. Let me just see here.
One, two, three.
So then our next presentation, Madam Clerk?
Recognition of Sister City Exchange Students, and our presenter is Anna Giles, Assistant to the City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As you teased earlier, Mayor, I'm very excited to welcome our guests from Narasaki. They are visiting us as part of our sister city program. And as you might recall, in June, we hosted the adult delegation from Narasaki, celebrating 52 years of friendship with that city. And this year, I'm very excited, or tonight, I'm very excited to share that we are celebrating 35 years of student exchanges. So the first student exchange happened in 1988, back before technology made it as easy as it is today to correspond with our sister city. And since then, with the exception of a brief pause during the pandemic, we have consistently welcomed students from Narasaki every December, and we send students from Fairfield to Narasaki every July. This is an amazing program because it really offers an opportunity for our, our students to experience different cultures as well as our community, because while this is a city-sponsored event, it would not be possible without the community support that we receive from so many people when we are hosting our guests. So the students and chaperones stay with host families while they're here. We have a number of host families in the audience, and they open up their home and welcome our guests for 14 days to really experience what life in America is like. And then we have a number of community partners that also extend a warm welcome to our guests while they're here in Fairfield. Students are going to be visiting schools to see what school is like here in Fairfield. They are touring historic locations in Northern California. So yesterday, we were at the Capitol and were able to meet with Senator Dodd's staff. Tomorrow, we will be meeting with Assembly Member Wilson's staff at her district office. And we're also going to some of the local attractions that we have here, including the Jelly Belly Factory. They've been to San Francisco. So it is a whirlwind of 14 days trying to pack as much attraction and American life as we can share during their visit. And so if I could please invite students up, I believe we have certificates of participations just to recognize that you are very courageous in choosing to come on an adventure and visit us here in Fairfield, and we are so grateful to have you and wish you a very warm welcome. I'm going to read your names, and then you can get your certificate. Great, thank you. You can wait till applause to the end. And Mihal?
Hold on, so the Vice Mayor can come around. Please.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay. I think I got everyone.
Thank you for inviting us this meeting, and we are very glad to meet you all. We studied about Fairfield a lot today, so our head is a little heavy. But it was great time for students to study different culture, so we learn many things. For example, we go to grocery store. The milk size is this big. It's not in Japan. We have small size. Yeah, just one liter. So only that small thing is very good experience for them. So I'm very happy. Then I'm a teacher in Narasaki. So before coming here, I introduce all students I teach. Then they are very interested in this city. So next year, many, many students want, want to come here. So we had hard time to choose who bring next time. So I want, we want to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Takumi Naito. I'm 15 years old. I came to, I came from Japan. I really like Fairfield. I want to enjoy Fairfield more and more. Everyone, please come to Japan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Taishke Inou. I'm from Narasaki to Japan. I'm 15 years old. I'm so happy to meet everyone from Fairfield. Every day at Fairfield is so, so, so much fun. If you come to Japan, I will show you around. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yuili Hosoda. So I'm 15 years old. This is my first visit to America, so I'm enjoying America. So I'm interested in education, so I want to be a nursery school teacher. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ria Kaese. I'm 15 years old and a freshman in high school. I came here for the first time. I enjoying America. I love Fairfield. My specialty is Japanese calligraphy. I'm interested in medical work. I want to be a nurse in the future. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Hi, I'm Mana Ishta.
Hi, I'm Mana Ishita. I'm 14 years old. I came Fairfield for the first time. I'm good at tennis. I want to be a person who helps people. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kohaku. I'm a high school student. Five days has passed since I come to America. I watched many things in America. I think America has a lot of interesting culture and good customs, especially Americans is so kind and so friendly. Also, they are unique. I became to like this country, and I, I became to love Fairfield. I want to have fun time more. Thank you and arigato.
Hello, everyone. And thank you for welcoming us friendly. I'm Miho. I'm not a student, I'm a chaperone. I work in city hall in Narasaki and try to make my city, Narasaki, more better every day. I'm so glad to be here and to communicate with people in Fairfield. I wish the exchange program between both cities keeps going. We are ready to welcome you to Japan. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. We, we want to tell you that we love you. You love Fairfield, and we love you back. And you're always welcome here, especially at David's house. I know, and he takes you to basketball games for your birthday, right? That's what I'm talking about. And happy birthday, too, again. Yes, you're welcome. His birthday was yesterday. And so he, he got to go to a basketball game with the city manager. They didn't invite the mayor? We'll try that next time. Okay, thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, the next.
And our last presentation, Fairfield 101 Civic Academy Graduation, presented by Deputy City Clerk Esther Beavers.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Esther Beavers, and I'm Deputy City Clerk. And thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to recognize our recent graduates from the Fairfield 101 Civic Academy. Just in case anybody in here doesn't know, the Civic Academy is a 10-week interactive program to share how local government operates and provides residents with firsthand exposure to the inside of city departments and a chance to discuss current issues with our community leaders. And now we will recognize our Fairfield 101 Civic Academy class of Fall 2023. Will all the graduates please come up to the dais? I will read all the names, and then Kelly's gonna help me hand out the certificates. And please remain standing. We will then take a group photo afterwards. And please forget me if I mispronounce your name. The first person is Jerome Conti Jr., Antonette Crosby, Robert DeWald, Journey Epps, Charles Zhao, Nancy Zhao, Misha McClure, William Penn, and Ryan Schneemantel.
All right. Council, we're gonna stand up so we can get a picture with our new graduates. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Thank you for spending the time to learn more about us and how we operate. We appreciate you. All right, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go ahead and turn to public comments now.
Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council can, cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine on your phone if you're online. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item. Thank you. And our first speaker is Anna Lynn Martinez.
Hello, City Council. My name's Anna Lynn. I'm an intern for Sustainable Solano for the Youth Air Protectors Program. We ask that you guys join. We have a Community Action Plan meeting on January 28th from 12 to 3 p.m. at the Adult Recreation Center. Basically, at this meeting, we're gonna have everyone from the community that would like to come, and we're gonna talk about different issues. We're actually the ninth, we have the ninth worst air quality in out of the counties and the entire state of California. So it's a really big issue that affects a lot of our city, especially the heart of Fairfield that we saw in a lot of statistics. So we ask that you guys come and join. Obviously, change can happen with one person, but the results don't come without the local government. And we really do ask that you come and involve yourself in it for the environment and for our city, especially for the heart of Fairfield. I love the city of Fairfield. And I would like to see a lot of different changes, hopefully for bike pathways, more walkways, making our air more breathable. We are a fire city, so hopefully more like backup plans for people who get evacuated. It's really sad to see. I personally got evacuated when we had the big fires a couple years ago. And it really affected a lot of our family, packing up those bags and stuff. And it's definitely gonna come again, especially with global warming and climate change. It's nothing we can stop anymore, except for preparing our city and making it better as we go along the way. So yeah, I'm gonna ask you guys to all hopefully come. I will definitely be there, and I'll pass out the flyers to Karen. But thank you.
Thank you, Anna Lynn.
Thank you. And our second speaker is Alex Lenine.
Madam Mayor, Fairfield City Council Members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I am the Resilient Communities Program Manager over at Sustainable Solano. So great job, Anna Lynn. Thank you for sharing a bit about our Community Action Plan. And I just kind of wanted to build off some of the comments that she made and dive a bit more into what the Community Action Plan will entail. So as Anna Lynn mentioned, Solano County as the whole has the ninth worst asthma rate in the whole entirety of California. Additionally, as far as Fairfield specifically goes, Calen BioScreen, or the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, has determined that certain neighborhoods in Fairfield have a higher asthma burden than between 90 and 98% of other neighborhoods in California. So again, this is a pressing issue for our city and one that we need to come together to address. During this action plan meeting, what it's going to entail is us coming together, again, at the Adult Recreation Facility, and learning a bit about air quality issues impacting our city, then breaking out into breakout groups with a combination of local experts, hopefully some elected officials and community members, to discuss the vulnerabilities that they, that y'all see regarding air quality in our city and the ways in which we, as a community, want to address them. And Madam Mayor, if I may, I would like to personally invite you as well. We have done a similar type of action plan in Sassoon, but regarding flooding and climate change-related issues. And one of the things that really helped propel the plan and really helped make it stick and to the point where it's currently being utilized by the City Council is the fact that Mayor Alma Hernandez participated in that process. So again, we really find that these plans work best and they're most productive when we have a collaboration between the city and community. So again, I'd like to extend, you know, the invitation out to all of y'all. Those flyers have the QR code to register for the event, but please feel free to get in contact with me directly. My email's alex@sustainable solano.org. And I hope to get in contact with y'all soon and see y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And I'll be there.
I don't have any more speaker cards. No hands raised online. I do have one speaker card for Consent Item 16.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and move to the consent calendar. Do we need to pull that then? Okay, we're gonna pull Item 16, so we can go ahead and...
And I'll just read this statement. "All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item." So I will read Item 16.
Okay.
"Second reading and adoption of ordinance 2023-13 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, establishing campaign contribution limits for the City of Fairfield elected offices." And Anna Guiles' name is mentioned, but of course she is with the sister city. So City Manager will handle it. And do you want to hear from the person?
Yes, please.
George Gwynn?
Hi, George.
Hi, Mayor. It's been a while since I last chatted with you. Unfortunately, the time for Sassoon City got changed to the same time you guys meet, so it's not every day I can attend, but...
It's good to see you.
Yes, good to see you, too. But this is a very important item, 16, that I really think you guys need to really consider carefully. The Flannery Group let the public think that Chinese were behind the land that they've required for at least three years. And I think that there's a possibility they might use no campaign limits to make sure they get their project through the way that they want. And if you want Travis to stay open and to have a viable city, because I don't think that's gonna help property values very much if Travis closes, this new city's not gonna make up the differences, in my opinion. I really think you should think twice before adopting this particular item. But it's not gonna be an easy thing, because I think that the Flannery Group has got many more resources than even the City of Fairfield and Sassoon put together. So I think it's gonna really be hard to stop them, but we really need to do it. So I really hope you guys will do everything you can to make sure that we don't end up with Travis gone, just like Epping and Vallejo with Mira Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Are you coming to the meeting on Thursday night?
Which meeting?
It's a public meeting with Flannery here in Fairfield.
I'll try to do it.
That'd be great. Six o'clock, Thursday.
Okay, thank you so much.
Take care.
Thank you.
So...
That's it, then?
That's it. So we're gonna go ahead and take a motion on this. Moved? Just Item 16, not the consent calendar. So we get a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye?
Sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion.
Oh, Scott.
And the second?
I thought it was the Vice Mayor, no?
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah. So there you go. And now we'll, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. So moved by Scott and seconded by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I don't think, did you ask for public comment on consent calendar?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so now we're gonna go on to Item 17, please.
Item 17, Resolution 2023-292 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the City Manager to sign the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement for the provision and management of emergency ambulance services, JAPA. And our presenter is not John Sturdy.
Rob Herrick.
Rob Herrick, thank you.
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Rob Herrick, Deputy Chief Fire, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Here tonight to discuss our Solano County EMS project that also goes in conjunction with Agenda Item 17, the Resolution to Authorize the City Manager to Sign the Joint Exercise Power Agreement Provision of Management of Emergency Ambulance Services. Just to give you a little history and a background, the countywide initial ambulance transportation contract was awarded to Medic Ambulance in 2000. This covers all of Solano County, but excludes the City of Vacaville that provides their own ambulance service and their operating area, which consists of rural Vacaville and a small area of rural Dixon. In 2010, it was renewed for 20 years. In 2020, Medic Ambulance was granted a five-year extension due to issues with the county EMS RFP at that time. In 2025, county, the County Emergency Medical Services Authority plans to award a new contract to a successful bidder with that starting in May of 2025. PPP, what is it? This is a current revenue. It's a public-private partnership between the paramedic fire departments and medic ambulance. Basically, medic is contractually bound by response times to the county and their, their contract. And it's nine minutes response time. But in these paramedic cities, they're labeled to extend that response time to 12 minutes, provided that the fire departments, the paramedic fire departments' response times are seven minutes 90% of the time. And what that does is it creates a massive cost savings to medic ambulance. It's estimated at $3.4 million annually, and that's shared with the paramedic cities, which are Fairfield, Benicia, Sassoon, Dixon, and Vallejo. And hopefully in 2025, Rio Vista will be coming on board. Our share of that public-private partnership is $1.4 million annually, and that's based off of the call volume. We have the second highest call volume in Solano County with, next to, next to Vallejo. So the, the, the fire departments and the, the public-private partnership, we reached out and collaborated with AP Triton to do a study, an ambulance transportation study, and that was completed. And their recommendation came back to do a, a public-private ambulance subcontractor model. The positive impacts of this type of model is there's an increase in revenue. There's additional revenue streams that the public agencies have access to. And we could take that additional revenue, we can improve our EMS system and maintain sustainability. As we see in some of our counties, the costs are getting so high. Some of the private ambulance companies on their own, they're struggling, and, and they're, they're defaulting on their compliance and contract times. It can improve that sustainability. It can also allow us to maintain the high level of services that we currently have in, in Solano County, and this would just allow us to expand on those. And those additional revenues will allow us to invest in the EMS system, things like equipment, training, staffing, supporting dispatch in the future. And it also gives the cities a, a larger say in that service delivery, because right now, the contract is between the county and the private ambulance company. In this type of model, we would hold a contract, so we would have a larger seat at the table to, to, to talk about deployment and staffing models and things to make sure that our cities are served as best as to our ability. This just came up a couple years ago, AB 389. And this actually allows the county Board of Supervisors to do a direct award instead of going out for a countywide RFP. The only thing is, is it has to be a public agency with a private ambulance subcontractor model. And that's what we're currently working on with the, the recommendations in our, in our transportation study. Solano County, they did write us a letter, and they said they were open for discussions. But the two things that we needed to do was we needed to create a JEPA, and we needed to get an ambulance subcontractor, to, to, to reach a tentative agreement with that subcontractor. And that goal is to complete both of those before or near the end of 2023. And this would be prior to the county releasing their countywide RFP for ambulance transport services. So a JEPA, it's, it's a Joint Exercise Powers Agreement. It does not create a new entity. And what this is, is it would be the six paramedic city, fire department cities in the PPP, and including all the fire districts, all of Solano County, with the exclusion of Vacaville, since they have their own ambulance service. It creates a structure, and the City of Fairfield would actually serve as a JEPA manager. And by doing that, we would hold the actual contract for the ambulance transportation with the county, and we would also hold a contract for, with a subcontractor with a private ambulance. And by doing that, we would receive an additional $650,000 annual administrative fees. And one of the things that we would be able to do with that is potentially fund some EMS positions to manage that. Our biggest role is, is that JEPA managers to ensure contract compliance with the county and ensure contract compliance with our ambulance subcontractor. So currently, we're, we're working on the JEPA, which is what's before you tonight. We also, in October, we released an RFP for our ambulance subcontractor. We did have one proposer submit a bid, and we're currently reviewing that and ensuring that it meets the minimum qualifications. And once that process is done... And once that process is done, then our next steps would be a notice of intent to award and then start negotiations to reach a tentative agreement with them, based on if we're able to achieve a contract with the county to provide those services. So addition to that, the next steps is to complete this JEPA with all of the parties. And then, once that's done and we reach that tentative agreement with the private ambulance subcontractor, we'll reach back out to the county to discuss a direct award option. That, we estimate, because of the MOUs and the negotiations, if the cost is going to be about $58,000, and again, that would be shared by all of the partner cities in the current PPP. If we're not successful with that direct award option, we would have the ability to bid on the countywide ambulance transportation contract. That would be released sometime next year. That's going to be a lot more work, a lot more in-depth in preparation. Some of these responses, these RFPs are in excess of 1,400 pages, and so the estimated cost is substantially higher. That would be shared amongst those partnering cities at $175,000. If we're successful in one of those two options, then the next step would be complete at what we call a FRAWS, a First Responder Advanced Life Support Agreement. That would basically be, that would replace the current PPP, ensuring that all of those partner cities still receive that same funding to provide those paramedic services. And then we would secure a contract with a billing agency. As a JEPA manager, the City of Fairfield will be assuming some additional liabilities and risks. The number one, or the biggest one, would be potentially startup costs. This is the biggest risk, and it's basically because in the beginning, the expenditures are greater than the income. This is because medical billing is delayed. It usually takes four to six months to start to receive those funds. So these startup funds aren't to buy property or assets, because we would have an ambulance subcontractor. We're not buying, we're not training personnel, we're not buying ambulances, we don't need to buy equipment. It's just there's delayed billing in that, with how the medical billing works. We're working closely with our City Manager and our Finance Director, negotiating contract and with our negotiations, our contracts, to try to minimize those risks. And at the point when we feel comfortable with it, then we can continue. But if we are not able to achieve, or meet their comfort level, we obviously have the ability to terminate or end negotiations, and then the JEPA and the subcontract would become null and void. The county could then just, basically at that point, issue out that countywide RFP and an ambulance services can bid on it. Some of the other potential risks could be a decrease in revenue, what we saw in COVID, that the ambulance transport rates, they dropped, or there could be some changes to the funding from Medicare and Medi-Cal, and that's about two-thirds of our patients that we see in Solano County. To minimize the rest of those risks, or another one, what we're seeing in other counties is they're having some issues with their ambulance subcontractors, with their compliance, workloads, workforces, and they're not able to meet the contractual compliances. The nice thing about Solano County is we don't have those problems. We have a very healthy system, and what this model would do, it actually allow us to expand and further invest in that system to only make it better. To minimize the rest of those risks, in the JEPA, we do have an operating reserve fund, if there is some of those ebb and flows, and also we have a risk management fund, which would cover additional liabilities, insurances, deductibles, and plans. And then also, as the, we have the ability as the contract holders, if there is some of these challenges, we can adjust deployment models, we can adjust ambulance hours, we can renegotiate ambulance transportation fees if needed with the county. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
I'm going to see if we have any public comment on this first.
I do not. Did anyone want to comment on this? No, and there are, there actually aren't any people online, so.
Okay, so any questions or comments here? Yes, Councilman Vaccaro.
Yeah. Hi, Rob, good presentation, as always. So my question is, how was the response from the other cities? Was there any, you know, any pushback at all, or did you get, most departments are okay with it?
So all of the, all of the member cities that I had mentioned, Rio Vista, it already went to City Council in November, and it was approved. Benicia's was approved tonight. Dixon's is getting ready to go to City Council, as well as Sisoon's, and then, of course, we're here tonight, and then we're still working a little bit with the districts, but speaking with the fire chiefs, they're all in favor of it. Right now, the fire districts, they don't receive any funding, you know? So with the current model, they don't receive anything. We built into the JEPA, as we start enhancing our revenue streams, that, part of it is requirements of these streams to invest back in the system. We can also help and support the districts, things like training, equipment, AEDs, Lucas Devices, and things like that. So for them to not have anything and then be included in the JEPA, to have a seat at the table to make sure that those, that the areas that they serve are also represented, you know, it's a positive and win-win for them. We're just still working through that with their county council.
So done, it fits them too?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Yes, Councilman Donison.
Thank you, Rob, good presentation. Can you go back to page three, please? So kind of, I don't know if it's more of, I want to kind of be educated. So it says on Item 2, or Dot 2, Medic Ambulance can increase response, can increase response times. So does that mean that because we're all met, Fairfield is all medics, that we can withstand a longer response time from medic? Or if you could maybe just explain that to me?
Yes, that's part of it. It doesn't have to be all of Fairfield employees' medics. At least, we have to have a paramedic engine. So the medic for all of the cities, they're contractually required to be on scene in nine minutes. For those that actually, we have the paramedic fire engines in all of these partner cities that you see up there, we're contractually obligated to be there in seven minutes, so we actually get there a little bit quicker, able to stabilize a patient, and then collaboratively work with medic to transport those patients.
So when you come and do, when fire comes and performs paramedic activities, then medic shows up, they're more transporting, they're not going to repeat actions you've already done, or when they put them on the ambulance, is that something else that's-
It's a collaboration at that point. You know, sometimes, if they're right on top of the call, they'll get there first, we'll come in, we'll augment and help and support to provide that best patient care. Most of the time, we get, we arrive first, we start the patient care, they come in as a team approach. You have both of those paramedics working together to provide that quality of care. If the patient's stabilized, then we will pass on care to the ambulance, and they'll end up transporting to the hospital. But if it's a critical patient, or they need more hands on deck, then we will actually send our paramedic with that paramedic to the hospital to provide more support. So it's definitely, it's a collaboration and working together to provide the best outcomes for our patients.
Thank you.
The City Manager would like to say something.
Yeah, real quick, I want to go back to Councilmember Vaccaro's question. You'd asked about the other cities. Just today, sometime early this morning, we did get, I received an email from the county administrator raising some concerns over the structure. I spoke with him this afternoon. They anticipate providing us with a letter. There were no specifics in my conversation with him or in the email that they had sent over describing what those concerns are. We have been coordinating with the county and have engaged with them at multiple times over the last years, we've been going through this process. And so we don't know specifically what those concerns are that they're raising at this minute, but did want to just, in answer to your question there, Councilmember Vaccaro, I wanted to make sure that I am on record as saying that the county did reach out today to raise some concerns. Again, don't know specifically what those concerns are.
Mr. City Attorney.
And Madam Mayor and fellow council members, I do want to report that I received an email at 2:52 PM this afternoon from Bernadette Curry, Solano County Council. I'll read you the substance of the email so that you can make an informed decision. It says, "David, Bill Emlyn asks that I reach out to you and give you a heads-up in advance of your Agenda Item Number 17. Our read of AB 389 does not allow for a direct award to a fire agency, even though I believe AP Triton's attorney has opined otherwise. I know that the fire departments have publicly stated that a direct award will save the department's money, but legally, I don't believe that the local EMSA has that ability under Health and Safety Code, Section 1797.224." Hope that makes sense. I will also say that I followed up in a phone call with Ms. Curry, just to make sure that I understood her statement correctly. I followed up with Lori Liu, the Assistant City Attorney, who managed this project with the fire department and the other agencies. She forwarded emails to me with conversations that she had with Assistant County Council in February of this year, confirming that they felt that they could do this under AB 3 tonight. So we're not sure what the disconnect is at this point. We've received, you know, we received, you know, one message from Assistant County Council, and then today we received this message from County Council. I can't, I know your question to me will be like, why is this happening? I have no idea.
Right, no, go ahead, Councilman.
Assistant Council, then the Council sending a totally different message. That's, that doesn't sit well with me at all, really.
I will say that I've been thinking about it, and I do recall that two of the supervisors have mentioned to me that they don't want us doing this. So that may be political, is what I'm thinking. But not recently, it's been months. I just was thinking about it now, and, yeah. So I, would you suggest, Mr. City Manager, that we go ahead and do what we need to do tonight on this, to vote yea or nay on it, so we can all move forward, since other cities have already done it?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. If for any reason there's some additional conversations with the county, and there's some concerns that they raise that we find legitimate, then certainly we can bring back the JEPA document for any amendment at a future date. Thus far, and I'm looking to Deputy Chief Herrick, City of Rio Vista and Benicia have both already authorized this same JEPA agreement that's before you tonight, and I believe that City of Sisoon City has it on their agenda, either for tonight or next Tuesday, for tonight as well. The City of Vallejo has indicated that they're going to go probably at their first meeting in January, just based on, you know, a number of topics that they had. They couldn't get it in December, but have indicated a desire to get that on in early January. That then rounds out all of the cities. As far as the districts, I know one of the districts is under the purview of the Board of Supervisors. In my brief conversation with Mr. Emlyn this afternoon, he said that that was going before the County Board next week. So that will be their first opportunity to have some of that conversation in public as well.
Anything else from the Council? Yes, Councilman?
I just had a question regarding the membership of the JEPA. So in the future, if this does happen, what would happen, or is there a protocol in the case of like a city dropping out or deciding no longer to participate with the JEPA?
Yes, we have, we wrote in the JEPA that there is ability for a city to withdraw. For us, we would still have that contract, we would still move forward, but what they probably would not be eligible for, which wouldn't make sense for anybody to withdraw, is they would not be eligible for the FRAWS, which replaces the PPP, so they would lose that money and support. So I don't see that happening. And then just a little follow-up to David's comments. This actually happened in San Diego County. They actually did a direct award earlier in this year, so it has happened. But this doesn't contractually bind us to anything, and we have very clear written in the JEPA and in the ambulance subcontract, if we do not receive the contract with the county, all of it's null and void. So there is no risk or there's no loss to us if this does not progress and we continue with getting some type of a roadblock that we've seen tonight.
And Madam Mayor, to answer the council member's question, and as a follow-up to Chief Herrick, as you all know, the withdrawal, termination, dissolution provisions are on Page 8 of the agreement in your packet. If the city were to want to withdraw, they'd have to give 180 days' notice, so 60 days, and then the withdrawal would not be effective until the next fiscal year, which is July? Okay, yeah, July 1st. However, kind of because of the fluid nature of everything that happened today, and I probably want to do a little bit more research, but I feel fairly comfortable saying that right now, because not every agency has yet considered this, if the Council were to, let's say, make an approval today and then decide before all the other agencies have signed on to this, I think you could probably do a counter resolution and take back your resolution before everything's signed. Once it's signed, I think, then you have to follow the provisions of withdrawal. But I think before every other agency takes it, if, you know, I think we said, what, January is the last group?
Yes.
I think up until that point, you could probably come back here and say, you know, take back, so.
Anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion then. So moved and a second from Councilman Donison. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and no opposition. And Chief Herrick, I know how long you've been working on this. I've spoken around, I've been following it somewhat. I also know you to have great dignity and a lot of hard work, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate you bringing this out of the box thing to us, and you did great tonight.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right. Take care.
Item 18?
Yes, Item 18, please.
First reading and introduction of ordinance 2023-14 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing an amendment to the contract between the City of Fairfield and the Board of Administration of the California Public Employees Retirement System. And our presenter is Farbod Perusman, our Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So I have a very quick slideshow for you, about 125 pages long, that's it.
Oh, I was hoping it was like 150. Okay, you can leave now.
So actually, it is a pretty quick slideshow, but there's a lot to get into, so I will be fairly quick about it, so you can ask any questions you may have. So back in August of 2012, if you all remember back then, for those of you who were at the, on the City Council then, or were involved in the City of Fairfield, a good friend, Mr. Sean Quinn, and that's his signature up there, with Barbara Dillon's initials, amended the contract between the city and Calpers, mainly because we needed to have a second tier, a second classic tier. We had 2.7 at 55. They wanted to probably add 2.5 at 55 for cost-saving reasons. At that point, most jurisdictions didn't know Pepper was going to be a reality about a year after that, so they were looking for cost savings. During that same period, they negotiated additional cost share with each bargaining unit, and if you recall, that's when Measure P was passed. Those are all efforts around saving money and increasing revenues. So as part of that contract, there were certain sort of stipulations. The contract specifically had three major employee categories, miscellaneous, fire, and police. And in general terms, they had cost sharing, additional cost share, 2.5 for miscellaneous, 2.25 for fire, 2.25 for police. The MOUs reflected the same numbers. Since then, since 2012, certain MOUs actually have increased their cost share. So FGMA's gone up to 2.7, FPMA's gone up to 3%. But in that original contract, 2012 contract, it stated that the cost share would, in a sense, decrease in August of 9, 2022, December 21, 2021, June 16, 2021, depending on the different employee category. Obviously, those things did not occur, because as you know, pension costs are continuing to go up. So we did not renegotiate anything with any bargaining units to lower cost share. That was not reflected in the Calpers contract. What should have happened is in December, or probably in 2021, we should have gone back to Calpers and come to this body to get those changed. However, Calpers also did not catch this, because what they should have also done is kick back all the reports we started giving them after December of '21, for fire, for example, because it wasn't reflecting the correct percentages. So for, we were actually dealing with a separate issue. In September of 2023, both Calpers staff and we discovered this discrepancy within the Calpers contract, and we asked them, okay, well, how do we fix it? What are the implications, et cetera? So the rest of my presentation will focus on what, why are we trying to fix it, and what the issues are. So I'm just going to go back here real quick. If you see, the cost share numbers are supposed to sort of, in a sense, go down. Let's take miscellaneous, for example, 2.5 to 2.27%. For pension contributions to be made prior to paying your, paying payroll taxes, the Calpers contract needs to reflect the correct cost share amount. If we don't amend the contract, that portion will be deducted after taxes. And specifically, this is what I'm talking about. Each bargaining unit has a specific cost share in their collective bargaining agreement- Each bargaining unit has a specific cost share in their collective bargaining agreement that's listed, that's currently in their MOU. For the unrep, they follow the FGMA and FEA MOUs for the most part, but the percentages in the Calpers contract, you see in the middle column, that's lower, so the difference, the last column, all, if we don't modify the contract, then the employees will have to pay that after they pay payroll taxes. So we asked Calpers, well, how do we fix that? We talked to the bargaining units as well, to tell them why we have to even go down this road, and they mentioned basically three different steps. As you can see, a good portion of your consent agenda, it was about eight different agenda reports that I submitted, and that's because they asked us to have side letters with all the different bargaining units, plus have a resolution for the unrep. So that's why you have eight resolutions, seven side letters, asking you to give the city manager authority to enter into side letter agreements. That very clearly states what the cost share is for each unit. At the same time, in order for this body to modify the contract with the, with Calpers' body, so the contract really is between you and the Board of Calpers, and you'll see in the language of the ordinance that that's what it's referring to. And city manager is the agent of the city, but it's really a contract between the two bodies. That's why we need an ordinance. In 2012, we also had an ordinance to make that change. So we need to submit an ordinance for your consideration, for the public's consideration, first reading being tonight. If that passes, then we will inform Calpers. As part of the process, they will send us ballots for all the people that are classic members of Calpers. Us, with the help of the bargaining units, will help distribute them, try to educate employees, and why it would be a good idea to answer yes, it's really for their own benefit. There's no change, we, the city's not gaining anything, not losing anything, they're not gaining anything, they might lose on, I guess, in a sense, if you think about it, taxes. So after we get, collect all those ballots, we send it back to Calpers, they confirm that the vote is affirmative, then after the second reading, you will authorize the city manager to amend the Calpers contract officially to reflect these, these correct cost share And that is it. May I answer any questions you may have?
I would like to see if there's any public comment.
I do not have any.
And nobody online or anything, I take it? So any questions? It looks like we got it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, so moved by Tonason, a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and no oppositions, that was unanimous. And tonight, colleagues, I'm going to close the meeting in honor of actually my uncle, who was born and raised here in Fairfield, Tony Lockwood, and I know that Councilman Vaccaro and his wife know him for a couple of reasons. He, of course, like I said, was born and raised here this weekend, he passed away unexpectedly. Our medics and police responded, and they could not resuscitate him, so we'll have a funeral next week. But Uncle Tony, Tony Lockwood, I call him Uncle Tony, of course, he was a lifelong member of Holy Spirit Church. My grandpa Lockwood, his dad helped physically build that church, and Tony did a lot of the repairs in there, anytime that the pastor needed help, anytime over his whole life, he would go in there and do what needed to be done, whether it was plumbing or anything. He could do it all.
I found this on the web.
Yeah, I bet you did. And so he was a man of all trades, he worked for the school district for years, that's where he retired from, and he worked in public works, and he also went around and fixings there, and he was a manager. So I'm glad that he's in heaven with the rest of his, our family, and we'll miss him, and thank you for allowing me to talk about him tonight, and I'm closing in his honor tonight. Thank you. And we'll see you on the 19th. Meeting is adjourned.